All right, again we want to call the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Like to welcome everyone who's in attendance in our audience here this evening, as well as those who are now joining us by TV, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, and host of various other ways, I think. But we appreciate everybody being attentive and a part of our meeting. And our first order of business, Pastor Jerry Steins with Solid Rock Baptist Church is here, will lead us in our invocation, and we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Donnie Potter will lead us in that. So, where's the pastor? He didn't come. We thought he was here. It's such a large crowd, I thought we lost him in the crowd. All right, well, with that, I'll ask Commissioner Mike LaBrosse to lead us in our invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day, your blessings that you bestowed on each and every one of us. We're thankful for our country, our state, and our county that we live in. We're thankful for our citizens. We're thankful for our law enforcement, our EMS, our fire, those folks, men and women, that protect us. Father, bless us tonight as we partake in the county's business, for we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have an additional proclamation for next week, for EMS Week. So we'd like to add that as item two B.
All right. Item two B.
And Mr. Jonathan Cook, EMS services will come up and present that.
All right. Anything else? Here and now, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county manager has presented.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And our first item on our agenda this evening is a presentation of Mr. Keith Hyman with the Communities in Schools. So welcome, Mr. Hyman.
All right. Chairman Church, Vice Chair, Mr. LaBrosse, Mr. Jeff Branch, Mr. Donnie Potter, Mr. Robbie Wilkie, thank you for your time this evening. So, like to talk to y'all about communities in schools. We basically have seven different sites that we work in throughout the schools, so the four major middle schools and the three traditional high school settings. We do not provide services at the early college or CASA because those support structures are in place for those high schools. As you can see...
Okay.
There we go. Technology out is fine. It says called Enter. All right. So, four hundred and ninety-seven students is typically what we serve, four thousand eight hundred and five students receiving whole school services. We'll go over that a little bit today, too. And our graduation rate last year was at ninety-one percent. Very proud of that, okay? Something I would like to talk very, very quickly about is that we serve two types of students. We serve a seated student, which is a student that actually takes a CIS class, and then we serve a student that's called an unseated student, in which they do not take a formal class, yet our site coordinator still monitors those three target areas, which is their attendance, their academics, and also their behavior. And kind of like a surrogate parent onsite for the child, to advocate for the child at various times, whenever a need might arise. As you can see, ninety-three percent of our students stayed in school, eighty-two percent of them improved or maintained their coursework, ninety-one percent improved or maintained behavior. And this is a huge one right here that I feel like I want to draw out. Last year, seventy-eight percent of those almost five hundred students improved or maintained their attendance. And I don't know if y'all have heard about what attendance rates are like in the school system now. It's not like you have a truant officer and you miss ten days, you know, on average, that number gets really high. So, in some cases, like forty days a year, is not out of the ordinary, is what I'm getting at. But we increased that from the forty-eight percent the year before, so a thirty percent increase there. It's all about opportunities what we give our students. So, a lot of times, our students aren't the ones maybe bringing in the change or bringing in the cereal or something for a big drive, but they're the ones that are organizing it and putting everything together. And as you can see at William Linnor Middle School, we did a project there that was whole school, where they collected four hundred and eight boxes of cereal, roughly four hundred and sixty pounds worth, and that was donated, of course, to the Yoke Fella, and we work hand in hand with Sharon there at the Yoke Fella. Our big thing that we try to do is support our local nonprofits that's also supporting the community as well. And then you can see how they did it. They had everything lined up and then collected everything. That project in itself was also related to Hunger and Homelessness Unit that we went over with that particular grade level, our eighth graders, and that was a culminating activity that they chose to do there at William Linnor Middle School. Our sixth graders, in their curriculum, they focus part of their year on the elderly because so many of our students live with older adults in their lives, sometimes grandparents, maybe an aunt or an uncle. And we actually have pin pals at the various retirement centers and health facilities that we can see here, and this was there at Hickory Falls there in Granite Falls Middle School when we went to visit them at Easter. Another one that we really try to connect with quite a bit, April's is actually awesome there at the Senior Center, and she actually takes her kids out into the classroom so the kids can see some different types of things, whether it's glaucoma, cataracts, what it feels like to have arthritis. And basically, the students go through a scenario of what a day would be like for somebody that's elderly, so they can, building that compassion in them. And then this one actually had a video in it, but I know that West Caldwell High School partnered with the Shelter Home of Caldwell County Schools. I don't have any way that I know of to actually get that video to come up, that's all right. That was on teen violence and dating violence, and they did a whole school. So when we talk about those close to five thousand students being enriched, each one of our school, every nine weeks does a major school-wide project. And Melissa Reynolds, I'd like to brag on her just a little bit, she is actually our site coordinator there at West Caldwell High School. She was also the Instructional Assistant of the Year for Caldwell County Schools this year. So, just a very valuable member of that school, serves not only our students but every student and also her peers. And then you can kind of see some of the things that they do to involve the students. And then we have our seventh graders who spent some time with Richard Gillian and his staff, talking about pet responsibility. And Richard and I met a couple of years ago, and he said, really, to impact this area, we're going to have to start with the youth. And he does a fabulous job with his group by going out into the schools. He's very visible, and he wants to be active, and he wants to be able to educate our youth. And the youth, actually, each one of the four middle schools picked a different topic. One did dental hygiene for dogs and passed out toothbrushes they bought from Amazon at the Ag Expo, but that gave those students a way to stand out in front of their other peers, to be able to public speak and work on various skills that are very important to them. And as you can see here, this was our tour that we did, and I'll throw a plug in for Perks Cafe. We always like to take our kids out to eat somewhere really nice beforehand and then go on a trip. So, every time you see these pictures, you know they've been fed well, all right? Here's our curriculums that you can see for sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade. Something that's very important that you see is in ninth grade in that bottom right-hand corner, the Dave Randvi Foundation's of Personal Finance. We spend a lot of time with that in eighth grade and also in ninth grade. They actually go through the whole curriculum. It's the same one that they use at Habitat for Humanity, for the recipients of those homes that have to go through that program with Mr. Ketter. We use that same program with our students, except it's a middle school version and a high school version. So, it's a really good thing between, the difference between needs and wants, but it also talks with them about the importance of college or a secondary experience after high school, whether it be getting a certification at CCC and TI. We're really hooked up as close as we can with Dr. Porch and his faculty for all of our students as well, too. Out of the forty-nine seniors that we have graduating this year from our program, twenty-one of those students are furthering their education at CCC and TI, either through, you know, a trade or a two-year degree or finishing up an associate that they're working on right now. Huge focus right now on real skills. So when we bring our mentors in from the community, we had seventy-six mentors this year. Once they are able to come into the classroom, we want them doing activities with the kids. Through a Tides Grant, we were very blessed to actually have the person from the Training Wheels Corporation come out and train our staff. That's the professional development that we obtained this year, and then the implementation of those things through our character education as well, too. That's aligned to what the school system does and provides. They have a character trait for each month. We recognize the students as well, too, in each one of the classroom settings. So, we recognize fifteen students a month for good character, and we really try to blow that up on social media as well, too. And you can see the mentors that are involved in those classrooms there, from high school to your far left, to middle school in the middle and on the right. And then you can see these real skills, like being able to communicate, problem solve, talk, work together. One thing you don't see is you don't see a child holding a phone in those pictures. So, we're trying to really break down those walls of isolation there and making sure that we're able to kind of interact and give our students activities that we can do with them. And then our most important thing is our mentors, and that was our Mentor of the Year on the far right, Shane Cook. He's an employee at Bernhardt. Bernhardt actually provides us, I told, the twenty-six mentors this year. A third of our mentors come from Bernhardt, you know? So, we talk about the lack of law enforcement officers, people for EMS. I'll go ahead and put a plug. Next September, August, I'll be hitting y'all up and seeing if I can get some mentors to come from the county into the classroom for thirty minutes to sixty minutes a week and making those kind of connections. You might end up having some more people applying about four or five years after that. Bernhardt's getting them. We actually have mentors now that work for Bernhardt that come into the school that were CIS students.
Yep.
Okay? And then you can see some other mentors. They bring their hobbies in. We did a B unit as well, too, in sixth grade, and that's what I'm talking about, thirty to sixty minutes a week in seven of our school locations. If y'all know anybody, Mr. Wilkie invited me to his church one time and I spoke, and we got a couple mentors from that, so we're very, very blessed about that. And then last but not least, I'll put a plug in, even though we're sold out right now. So Taste of Caldwell is Friday. Looking forward to that fundraising event. We do one major fundraiser a year. I would tell you to buy your ticket, but we're sold out, guys.
That's a good thing.
Okay? So that's a good thing, isn't it? But that's it for this evening. So, I just greatly appreciate the funding that's provided each and every year for our program, and we definitely utilize it from anything. Let's see here, last week, turned on two water taps and sawmills, paid for a kid to go to the FBLA thing in Atlanta, covered rent for one of our students. So we just try to take care of those barriers so that students can focus on academics and not worry about, you know, a bill or anything like that. So, we thank you very, very much. And thank you for the opportunity to share. Any questions or anything?
Well, we just know that you guys are making a difference.
We thank you.
And we thank you for that.
We really do.
You may want to reach out to Libby Brown, because we do have a reading buddy program that you could probably tap into for your mentors.
I'll get her before she retires.
They're already doing it.
Yeah, she's getting ready to retire.
Yeah, no.
But there'll be a new one.
But you may want to talk to her and Leslie, our librarian, and kind of connect with them, because it's already there. All you got to do is tap into it.
Tap into it. That's all I had to hear.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank y'all so much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
As he's walking away, I know he had a stellar career with Caldwell County Schools of thirty years, I reckon. Principal.
Sixteen, he was thirty-two.
Yeah. There you go.
Don't sell him short.
He didn't have enough, so he went back and took this program up.
That's it. I love it. It is a good opportunity.
Yes, sir. And we appreciate it.
You know, you're in this kind of a position, so thank you.
Well, we know you're making a difference in folks' lives, and that's what counts, and we appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate my site coordinators, the two social workers who give it to DSS. They're phenomenal, and we have a very strong team. Thanks.
Yes, sir. All right. Well, our next item is a proclamation of Older Americans Month, and Ms. Beverly Rupert's here, going to read that for us, I hope.
We have a substitute tonight, yeah.
Got a substitute tonight.
All right, I'm going to throw this agenda away that's got all these names on it of the people that's supposed to be here, and I'm just going to call the item out, okay? I'm not calling any more names unless I know you. Sorry.
No, that's completely fine. It's our fault. Beverly is out on medical leave, and so she wasn't able to be with us tonight, but we are going to be her stand-ins, so we hope we can do it justice. So, this is April Wiles Williamson, and she is one of our adult services supervisors, and she's going to read the proclamation to us, and we just want to say that, you know, this month is to recognize our older Americans and our older citizens in Caldwell County and just take a moment to really recognize and appreciate the contributions that they have made to our county and that they continue to make. So she's going to read this proclamation, and then she's going to talk a little bit about our Celebration of Life event that is happening on Friday, so I'm very excited about that. So I'll go ahead and let her do that.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Our Older Americans Month 2024 proclamation. Whereas May is the Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and to honor Caldwell County's older adults, their immense influence and every facet of American society, and whereas through their wealth of life, experience, and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generation and carry forth abundant culture and historic knowledge, and whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities, and whereas communities benefit where people of all ages, abilities, backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and to live independently, and whereas Caldwell County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment and connectedness. And now, therefore, we, Caldwell County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim 2024 as Older Americans Month. This year's theme, Power by Connection, emphasizes and profound impact the meaningful interactions and social connections and well-being, the health of older adults in our community. We call upon all residents to join us in recognizing the contributions of our older citizens and promoting programs and activities that foster connections, inclusions, and support for our older adults.
All right. Very well read. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, having the proclamation read, I'll make a motion that we adopt May of 2024 as Older Americans Month, as has been presented in this proclamation. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So, we thank you for being here, and we do appreciate our older Americans. How old do you have to be to be an older American?
That's exactly what I was getting ready to ask.
It's old.
It's old.
I just turned sixty-two this past week. Does that qualify?
You've got to be at least older than Mayor Satsur, I think.
Oh, well, ain't nobody older than him.
Everybody on good.
Oh, very well.
Great job, April. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can say just a little bit about Celebration of Life. It is, it's an event that we hold annually. Actually, it's our fifty-first Celebration of Life event. It is this Friday, May 2024. It starts at eight-thirty, and that will be informational booths, and then goes to one o'clock. It is for sixty and older. So, we do invite everyone that is sixty and older to come. There's informational booths, door prizes, entertainment, and lunch. This is a free event, so we would love to have anyone over sixty to come and join us.
You tell them where it's at while you're on tape, Lee. Yeah.
Mountain Grove Church.
Mountain Grove Church.
Yep.
And I will say, if nobody's ever attended this event, I highly recommend it. It's absolutely wonderful time. The music's great, the food's good, the camaraderie's great. I mean, it's just a really, really good event. So, if you have never been, I highly suggest you go, Mayor Satsur.
Thank you for coming tonight, Mayor.
Thank you for being here, Mayor.
He's usually picking on me.
And we were able to get it publicized in the paper this Saturday, this past Saturday, so thank you for the people that did the newspaper and our gold sponsors and silver sponsors. We couldn't have done this without them.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Yep.
Okay, I think I know that Jonathan Cook's here tonight and is going to come do the EMS proclamation. And Jeffrey, I saw you making fun of my age back there, and you ain't that daggone far behind me.
Thank y'all for allowing this to be placed on the agenda, and we just want to be able to celebrate our EMS staff next week, honor them for all they do for our community. We also want to thank y'all for all that you do to help us as well. But this is the EMS Week proclamation to designate the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth of 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Service teams, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. And now, therefore, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of the week, do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth, or nineteenth through the twenty-fifth of 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week. The fiftieth anniversary of EMS Week theme for EMS Week is honoring our past and forging our future. The Board of Commissioners encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook, and all. Do I hear a motion that we adopt this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the proclamation as read.
Any other comment or discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So, thank you for everything you do. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. Trevor, you didn't say anything, did you want to?
I didn't need to say anything.
Okay. I didn't want to slight you. All right. So next, we have a presentation of construction contract with Atriax for Cager's Mountain EMS Base, Mr. Simon Lucas.
I am as the script, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Bless you.
I am that person.
And you're actually here.
I am.
And that's good.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I am Simon Lucas from Atriax Building Solutions. It's a real pleasure for me to be here this evening to present an update and a reminder of where we are with the design and the construction phase for Cager's Mountain EMS facility. I'm joined this evening by Hal Marvin, our Director of Engineering, and Raymond Burrell, who'll be heading up the construction onsite when we get started. I have about five or six slides for you this evening by way of a reminder and update. Probably take ten minutes of your time this evening, so please bear with me. As you know, we started this process ten months ago with County Manager and his team closely collaborating on a scope and design that would provide a facility fit for purpose now and into the future. And I'm pleased to say that at an architectural level and for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, we're at a hundred percent. On the civil side, we're just finishing up some final discussions with Batten on the water line to the site, and we hope to have that concluded later on this week so that we can move into the final permit process back end of this week. In the background, of course, we've been pulling together the full project costs to include the construction element, which is now complete. And what you may have heard is that through the process, to make sure that we get good value of money for the county, we've had to do some rig working with some of the subcontractors and some clever substitutional work in the actual design. What I am pleased to say, though, is that the functional layout that we first conceived and we've developed with the team has not been jeopardized in any shape or form. So what you'll see this evening is what the final project will look like and represents what the team have asked for from the outset. We've also in the background put together a complete construction schedule, which I'll talk a little more about in a moment or so, and all of our subcontractors and suppliers that we plan to use are now on standby in a holding pattern. We have contracts ready in the office to send out to those people so that they're ready to mobilize. We also have put together a site construction sign, which has been approved by the county and is also being fabricated at this moment in time. And the final, probably the most important part, the actual contract, which is now being pulled together, has been vetted by the county attorney and is now awaiting your signature subject to ratification this evening. So a lot of work has been going on in the background. I don't want to dwell too much on this. I'm not sure that I can blow this up at all, actually, but just as a reminder of what we have designed and what we plan to deliver for the county, the existing facility on Connolly Springs Road, which was the old doctor's practice, which is the right-hand side of the screen there, will be added to with a new metal building, which will have three double bays housing six emergency vehicles. I'm going to try and lead you around this, starting at the back. We've added to the existing facility four bedrooms, which will accommodate eight beds at any one time. In front of that, in the purple, are two ADA bathrooms. Next to that will be a day room or living quarters, together with a fully fitted kitchen. Further up that corridor to the right, there'll be the mechanical room, and in the green, two staff offices, and in the far back right-hand corner, you will see discreet sheriff's office with its own separate entry. Moving forwards to the front right of the screen, in the big yellow block there, we plan to put in there an EMS training bay, which will house the shell of an ambulance with a classroom behind it, so that members of staff can actually replicate an ambulance facility and then use the back part as a training backup. This will be adjacent to, just further to the left there, an EMS room, so that the staff will be able to replicate taking a stretcher or something out of the back of the ambulance bay and into the EMS room, so that we'll be real-life experience for them. Next to those additional training rooms, and then some storage in the far-left-hand corner. Moving forwards towards the bay there, you see an area, which is a work area for the staff, for administration, to do their reports, et cetera, and for communications. And then one of the things that we found on many of the site visits was the lack of available space for the crews and to have that co-located with where it's needed in the EMS base. So there's plenty of storage in that pink box next to the large metal building. What I'd like to do now, it's a bit dry on a piece of paper, is I'd like to take you on a virtual tour of how the facility will look. There's only one disclaimer here, that the grading that you'll see around the building is the only part which is not true to case, et cetera. is the only part which is, is not, uh, true, true to case, et cetera. There are some challenges with that site, which we'll work on, but the outside of the building and the interior tour that you're about to see is a true replication of what we will deliver for you, so I'm hoping this will actually work. So this was put together by our architectural team in software called Twin Motion, and as you can see, as we go around the site, roll-up doors to the front and to the rear, metal building and brickwork to face the building. Around the rear again, um, three more roll-up doors, and then you can see the, the extended roof line there, which will house the sleeping quarters with the four windows there. Then we move across behind the facility with the, um, day room there and the kitchen and the sheriff's sofa in this, office in this far-right-hand corner, with the sheriff's entrance here on the side of the building. The next phase is this, um, ambulance training bay, also with its own roll-up door, where the, uh, ambulance body will be housed, et cetera, and then, uh, we're adding new windows to the front as well to bring some light into the training rooms. We then take you inside through a secure, uh, reception area. So reception on the left as we move in there, and you can see the, the admin room on the, on the, the left-hand side of that, and then into the fully fitted kitchen, and these colors have been designed in as part of the, uh, color scheme to represent the county seal, so you'll see this replicated throughout the whole building. We come down the corridor now, and we go across to where the EMS room will be, which is adjacent to the training, EMS training bay where the ambulance body will be, and you can see the classroom at the rear part with lockers and, uh, work units there. So as we exit the classroom here, we go up the, uh, the front corridor with more training rooms to the left and, uh, staff bathrooms on the right-hand side here, up into the administrative area. Back in through the, uh, living quarters and the day room and the kitchen here, and you'll see a shot of, uh, the administration area and the work area for the, for the teams here, past the reception on the left-hand side, and then we're gonna take you out into the, uh, the actual EMS bay. So the storage room to the left, actually, we're gonna go into the bathrooms first, actually, to give you a, a look and feel of how it's gonna look when it's completed. Both of these bathrooms are ADA accessible. And then through into the EMS bay, and again, the colors reflect the county seal colors, et cetera, um, as I said, three double bays here, roll-up doors front and back, so that the vehicles can be parked back-to-back in the facility, and you'll see the decon room in the far-right-hand corner there with an ice maker and an eye wash station, and then a full mezzanine floor that runs virtually from front to back, which can be used for storage and also for training purposes, and lockers and a workbench on the right-hand side, so, um, that's a, a really good look and feel of what we plan to, uh, deliver for you. Uh, onto some important facts here, I said that we've pulled together the construction cost, um, the project cost in total, that's including design, construction phase services, all of the soft costs, which include things like bonding, insurance, et cetera, runs at four point five eight million dollars. Uh, what does that work out, cost per square foot? Fully loaded, again, incorporating all of those soft costs, is four hundred and sixty-three dollars a square foot, but when you take those out, we're looking at approximately three hundred and sixty dollars per square foot for the, just, just for the construction. And throughout this process, obviously, we've tried to benchmark against comparable, uh, facilities in and around the area, et cetera, and there's nothing quite like, uh, this unique opportunity that we have, but the range that we've found on similar facilities is between three fifty a square foot and up to and beyond, actually, five hundred dollars a square foot, so we feel confident that we're, we're in the right area for this. Um, I mentioned earlier that we've put together a construct, uh, construction schedule for the work, um, from, from day one, we anticipate taking three hundred and eleven days to complete the work, which equates to sixty-two working weeks, that's Monday through Friday, with an estimated completion of July next year. So the next steps for us, obviously, this evening, I'm grateful for your time to, uh, to revisit this opportunity, uh, we're looking for your approval, uh, we'll then move forwards to s- sign the contract, and once that is done, a formal notice to proceed. Immediately following that, we'll notify the subcontractors and have them sign their contracts, uh, we will finalize and obtain the, the permits required. In the background, we'll install the construction sign, uh, and there is a pencil-in groundbreaking ceremony for Friday, the thirty-first of May, and then the important thing, we actually get to start work. I just want to leave you with this, this is the, uh, construction sign, it's a four-by-eight, four-by-eight sign, which should go on the roadside, two-sided sign, and what we've tried to do here is, uh, adopt images of how the facility will look and also incorporate, uh, the seal of the, of, uh, Cager Mountain, um, the county seal, obviously, emergency services, and the Atriax Group, and that will be proudly presented on the roadside for all and sundry to see as they drive by each day. That concludes my, uh, brief presentation, um, I'll now open the floor to any questions you have for my colleagues and myself.
I got a couple of questions, I know, a couple of months ago, when we looked at the first round of the presentation you made, we talked about why didn't the hallway, as you're coming out of that training room, uh, with the stretcher, was that, was that done?
Yes, it was.
Okay. The other note I made was, when I just saw this presentation, that training door's opening in front of the, the other, uh, training room, so you're gonna have to come in, shut the door, and then go in the room. We had talked about either reversing that door or
Okay, yes.
Putting a slider there.
I understand, um,
Because you won't be able to get the stretcher in the training, in the room.
Yeah, the representation on the, on the slot, on the, the virtual walk-around may not be totally accurate, but I'll certainly check into that
Okay.
to make sure we adopt that, yes.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
I'd like to know why we got bedrooms in this thing? Who, who, who put bedrooms in this place? Why, why would we put bedrooms in it when we're running twelve-hour shifts? And even the people that I've talked to at EMS said, "They don't need bedrooms, you got a recliner to sleep in, why are you back there in the back?" I mean, I, I don't know, it looks like wasted space and extra money to me. I mean, if you're paying somebody for twenty-four hours a day, I mean, ain't so, I sleep in a recliner just as good, I mean, are you gonna go back there and get in bed, and then when the call comes in, are you gonna have to get up, get your stuff, go on, take off?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it looks like it'd be a lot less cost to me without four bedrooms in the very back of the building.
Anybody want to answer that question?
We're running twelve-hour shifts now.
Yeah, I think
There ain't no, I mean,
I mean, I'll take a stab at it, but I know that, uh, we're trying to build it for, uh, the possibility of not being on a twelve-hour shift there, um, as I understand it, we're looking at some hybrid shifts and po- potentially, uh, having some folks working a twenty-four-hour shift and just, uh, out of the accommodation of that would be allowing a bedroom, I guess, for a place, a rest period or a place to be able to go, and then
So when you're on a twenty-four-hour shift, you get so many hours off during that shift to sleep, or how does that work?
Nah, but typically, everybody that builds a building, fire stations and all, will have a bed that somebody can go lay down in.
And how many square feet was in these bedrooms back there? Hell, squat a few square foot, at four or five hundred dollars a square foot back there.
In total?
One fifty to two hundred per bedroom with two beds in each.
One fifty to two hundred per bedroom.
So
Eight hundred square feet.
Feet times five hundred dollars, you know, I mean, that's a lot of money for something I don't know that we need in a EMS base. I mean, I, tell me if I'm wrong, I mean, I don't understand it. We built, just built two new EMS bases with no, with no bedrooms in them, why do we need to start building bedrooms again?
Also, uh, you're planning for extreme weather events when employees can't get home, and they have to work over shifts, so they may actually be off-shift and need to stay there so they can work the next shift.
Well, I ain't sleeping in a recliner, I sleep in a recliner all the time, I mean, why would, I don't understand putting bedrooms in this, I think it's just a waste of money for us, and I mean, I'm all for the base, I wanna build a base, but I wanna save the taxpayers all the money that I can save them on the same thing that we need without bedrooms in it, I don't under, I just don't understand it.
Any guys at EMS want to chime in?
Since I was here with the project from the start to the finish, one of the reasons that we designed that is because we do have the desire to possibly go back to twenty-four. Also, we wanted to build a building that wasn't gonna be something that was gonna meet the immediate need. Now, we have two new EMS buildings, uh, one at Lower Creek and one at Valmate, we were looking to build a building that was gonna last this county for fifty years, give, give or take, I feel pretty confident that with building a building without the living quarters is probably not gonna meet our need. You, any fire station in America, and, and now I know we're talking fire versus EMS, Lenora Fire, um, both stations, three stations now, Gamal Fire, uh, Grace Chapel Fire, all, all of those have current living quarters, uh, that, that has been in them since existence. The Lenora Fire building down the street, myself, Randy, and, um, al- also Robbie started there, and they were, uh, bedrooms in that, uh, since nineteen sixty-nine, when that building did open. Our main goal, guys, was to build this building so that it would last this county for fifty years. Everybody that was a part of this will more than likely be dead and gone before that building right there is obsolete, and that was our main goal for doing this. There's no doubt that the call volume certainly meets it over here in, in, in this end of the, uh, of, of the county, with the partnership that, uh, Cager's Mountain has provided, it's just been, uh, it, it, it's just been astronomical. Yeah, by building this building and providing that, if we do in the future have to add a additional EMS crews, which that is going to happen eventually, when I, you know, probably not in, in a reasonable amount of time, but that is where the county's growing, if you go, go down, uh, towards Connolly Springs Road, they got the big development, the, uh, that's going in, and we feel like our call volume's only just gonna go higher and higher and higher, and that was the reason that we put that in there, because unfortunately, uh, and to, to just a couple more points, those, uh, the new, two new EMS ba- uh, bases that we have, if we do go twenty-four hours, and by code, we can't allow people to sleep there, or we can't allow people to be there, uh, the, that is also a major issue, Jeff, is the coding issue, uh, and then also, too,
So you're telling me that you can't go twenty-four hours a day without having sleeping quarters for people to be in, when you're paying them, paying them to be at work, but you're paying them to have a bed to sleep in, is that what you're saying?
I've been in the fire service, emergency services for forty-four years.
Is that a state, I mean, is that a state mandate?
Uh, I'm not sure if it's a mandate, I don't wanna get into the code part, but I've been in emergency services for forty-four years, I've worked at three different paid departments, every one from Lenora Fire, Hickory Fire, to Charlotte Fire, every one of them currently right now has living quarters in their fire stations, that's number one. Number two, I wanna use it as a recruiting tool. I, I wanna build good bases, I wanna build something that not only y'all can be proud of, that Cager's Mountain can be proud of, those folks that live out there in that community can be proud of, and for you, and for building a basis that provides this, it's gonna provide us a, a, a recruiting tool, because goodness knows, we have a hard time recruiting and maintaining and retaining personnel, we do in, in, in all aspects of emergency services, regardless of the size of it. For instance, and I'm gonna use an example, largest fire department between Miami Dade and Philadelphia, Charlotte Fire Department, in two thousand, three thousand people took the interest for, and, yeah, this past year, seven hundred took it, so we're trying our best to build something that's gonna be retention, gonna be recruiting, it's gonna be a building that y'all are proud of, gonna be a building that town's proud of, and gonna be a building that that community's proud of, and if we're gonna run twenty-four hours to maintain that, I do think we do need living quarters, and that's why the, our team, uh, through a lot of guidance from the county manager and others, we decided that we probably need little, little heavy quarters in there. Now, uh, when the, uh, design team for Matrix come in and we, uh, presented it in, uh, in the, uh, the, the other room, that was one of the things that we've talked about from the get-go. Now, one of the reasons, one of the ways we did save money was because that was an add-on, and we was only able to provide the residential sprinklers, unfortunately, the whole building will not be sprinkled. I'll entertain any more questions.
I just, I don't understand why we need bedrooms in a place, when you're paying people for twenty-four hours a day, when they can sleep in a recliner just as good, it's like, I just don't understand why somebody's gonna be in bed and then have to get up and then run to take care of somebody myself.
Well, and
And I'm just trying to look out for the taxpayers.
And I understand, we are
Eight hundred square foot at five hundred, four hundred, five hundred dollars a square foot extra on the back of, I mean, turn it into some kind of training rooms or some other things, but
Well, now, that's something we're very proud of.
I'm proud of the building, I, and I want the building just more, as much or more than anybody, and I appreciate the whole building, but I just don't think we need sleeping quarters
Well,
for somebody that's working.
And I'll, I'll just add to the tradition of emergency services.
Well, traditions can be changed.
I, I, I understand, but i- in emergency services, for people that work twenty-four hours, they do have living quarters, and that's pretty much from all, 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 all over the country, and that's pretty much all, all over the world, as far as that goes. Uh, that was our goal, yes, sir, Mr. Trump.
Highlight, too, there is probably an OSHA standard that says something about it, and in a rest period or a downtime.
Yes, sir.
Cause you can't limit somebody to, uh, what they can do, uh, and how they attain that rest, so, and I get, I get your point.
Well, they shouldn't be working twenty-four hours a day if we have to give people, I mean, are they gonna be resting when we need them to come to save my life?
No, they're gonna get up and come, Jeff. That's, that's what they do.
Well, and in some ways, though, Jeff, it's no different than the way that probably ninety percent of the fire service works here in Caldwell County, cause almost every department has combination and paid, but then also, us that still volunteers, we do have to get up and, 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 yeah, respond to your, to your office, your business, your home, uh, and I'll assure you, it'll actually be quicker from leaving that station, or if you go, go down at Lenora Fire tonight, at say, three o'clock in the morning, you'll see how quick they get out the door, uh, that's my, that's my, uh, take on it.
I just, like I say, I just think it's a lot of extra money for taxpayers to be putting a bill on a building, I mean, I like the building, I like everything else, but I just, you know, I'd rather see training facilities, something else other than bedrooms and everything.
Understand, sir. Respect.
I'll just put on the recruitment and retention, um, that we're trying to put with the, the hybrid schedule, um, Jeff hit the nail on the head when he talked about, twenty years ago, we had applicants, um, a lot of applicants that we could selectively put, um, this county's not had a paramedic application since January, I'll put that out there, um, surrounding counties are going back to twenty-four-hour shifts and have stolen probably about ten or twelve of our employees in the last six months, just based on that, so, um, we have certain metrics that we've got to uphold, um, shoot times is one of them, we have to be out of the door ninety seconds. Um, with that, it's, it is a bedroom, and it's more of a place for someone to rest and have downtime, we see a lot of things in emergency services that sometimes you just need time to get away from, from others, and while the bedrooms are, are for our employees, um, if we call in additional emergency responders, um, from outside, this is another place for rest, and say if we have a swift water rescue, um, hurricane, whatever be the case, and we're bringing in multiple agencies, we just brought in over twenty agencies for a search a couple of weeks ago. If we were doing twenty-four-hour operations, we'd have downtime for these people, too, and currently, we'd have to pay to pretty much lodge these people or provide them some type of lodging when they come to help us, so it's not only for us, um, it will help us, obviously, um, we're using it as a recruitment tool, but it's also for these, these large emergencies, so it, it'll do for several things, for sure.
Makes me feel like an idiot that we didn't put bedrooms in all other ones, then, if we was gonna do this, then, why, why now? Why now? Why that?
Yeah, I think
Looking back, probably, probably should, because it, it's a recruitment tool, um, our employees have been polled, um, there's probably eighty-five to ninety percent that that's what they want, um, we've, we've tried to hold back on some of them leaving, honestly, we could have probably had another three or four in the last month that left and went to surrounding county for twenty-four-hour shifts. So it's, it's just, uh, it's, it's largely a recruiting tool, just that, so we can retain our employees, it's been So it's, it's just, it's largely a recruiting tool, just so we can retain our employees that's been here. Some of these employees have been here 10, 15 years and it's a.
Well, I'm not against 24-hour shifts. I'm just saying, I don't think we need people sleeping in bedrooms in the back, at the very back of the building while they should be on call.
I'll add one thing, Wilkes County completed one last year, about a $10 and a half million facility, just slightly bigger than this one. And they did not put sleeping quarters in it. And so now they're bringing out cots and having sleeping offices. They're not, they're not beds, and so it's created issues there. They, they wish they had put bedrooms in there. The emergency services is changing fast because we have a higher need because our population is aging across this country, as y'all well know. And there's going to be more and more demand, and so we have to, we have to adapt.
It's, it's my understanding that in the, in the, in the previous years, they don't actually bed down and make the bed up and get up under the covers and snuggle up and go to sleep. It's the way I've.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because like I said, it, it'd take a little bit more than 90 seconds for our, for our metrics to obviously put everything back on, you know?
Yeah.
Get out there. We're not going to sleep, we're not, it's just, it's a place to, to get away, to rest, so you're, so you're not up and around all the time in a recliner or such.
If the call volume stays as it most of the time is, from about 7 till about 1 a.m., they're not going to be in, they're not going to be near the bed. And then from about 1 till about 4:30 to 5 o'clock, and that's, that's when the rest period could possibly, and that will depend totally on the night and the weekends will be more.
Please step up to the microphone.
The wizard has spoken.
As I indicated, that our, our call volume is high from about 7 to midnight. Then it'll slow down till about 4:30 in the morning. And then from 4:30 to 7 o'clock, when people start getting up, feels bad, slip, fall, trip, the whole nine yards, that's when we start running again. And most of the time now, where it's at Lenore Fire or any other fire, you get a department or any other EMS base that runs 24. And, and an example I'll use is our county to the west, and that would be Burke. That a lot, a lot of people bring a sleeping bag and they just lay it on top of the bed and then they're yeet high up and go. That's, that's traditional across, across the state of North Carolina.
All right, anything else?
Nah, still ain't, still think it's a lot of wasted extra, what, 800 square foot back there and money wasted.
I mean. I guess if, if they warrant it someday and we always stick with 12-hour shifts there, that could be utilized as additional office space is kind of what I'm thinking too. And we don't have a lot of storage in this building, I don't think.
Little to no storage in it.
So it could be an opportunity for that if you needed it someday.
My guess would sell that land behind it and make up these.
Oh, yeah, we're going to sell that. Yep. So. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a lot of money and a lot of effort to go into building these bases. And the mayor of Cager's Mountain's here tonight, we've been picking on him a little bit, but he's very happy and supportive of, of having this facility there. As a matter of fact, my phone's quit ringing so much, he don't check on me so much now that he knows it's coming.
Yeah, he used to check on us pretty frequently, didn't he?
Pretty often I'd get a call from Mayor Setzer, check on me and see how I was doing and when we're going to build an EMS base in Cager's Mountain.
I will say, I will say that this project would not have been possible without Mayor Setzer and his efforts to, to make this happen along with his fellow council members there in Cager's Mountain. Not going to say it would have never happened, but it wouldn't have happened now. And my appreciation goes out to you for leading the charge on this and making this happen along with the support from your council, sir.
All right, so does that take us to our next item, I guess, which would be a decision to award the contract to Atriacs?
Yes, sir, you'd be approving execution of the contract by myself and the staff, and then next is budget revision.
All right, just a couple of questions from a point of preference, I guess, but will we get a list of your subcontractors? Who's actually going to be doing subcontract work on the property? And, and I hope that you try to get subcontractors from Caldwell County. I know you're from Catawba, but we know we got a lot of folks in Caldwell County that can do that kind of work. And I, I hope you've reached out to those folks. It sounds like you already made the determination and, and awarding those contracts if we award this tonight, who your subs are. So all that's been decided, which is good. Will we get to tour the building any while it's under construction or will we get thrown out if we show up?
No, we, we will have strict controls because it's a construction site, so health and safety. But this gentleman here, who's going to run the site, be there from dawn till dusk every day by arrangement, can give tours during construction. If somebody does show up, providing it's safe, Raymond will do the tour as appropriate. But we're not going to jeopardize any safety while we're actually on site, that's first and foremost.
Are any of your subs from here locally?
Yes, the main plumbing contractor, Triplets Plumbing, is, is based in Lenore, et cetera. And I think if you recall back to the first presentation that we made, we, we do actually use a handful of preferred subcontractors on certainly the mechanical and electrical areas because we have an established relationship with those people. They know what quality we expect and vice versa. So some of those larger subcontractors are predetermined, but there are smaller subs from the county that will be used, and you can see that list.
Perfect.
Thank you.
There won't be many. And, and for a point of reference, I got thrown out of your building one time. Yep, over in Hickory. You invited me to come look at it and I got escorted out of the building. And I ain't got over it yet, I'll just be honest with you. I've called you a few times and never got a return phone call, so I ain't got over that either.
Please, please try again and I guarantee you won't get thrown out.
Oh, I don't think that.
Any of you are always welcome, thank you.
I won't be back, it's okay. But that's where I'm at with it. Just wanted to say it, get it off my chest. All right, so do I hear a motion that we adopt this contract this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we award the contract to Atri, at Atrix?
Atriacs.
Atriacs to build the new EMS base in Cager's Mountain.
After they take the bedroom. You'll just take the beds out?
Yeah, maybe.
All right, so we have a motion to award the contract to Atriacs for the building and construction of the Cager's Mountain EMS base. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, so thank you. I guess execute the contract, Mr. Manager.
Thanks, sir.
All right, next was a budget, I'm sorry?
I was going to ask about the budget.
That's next.
Yep, so we have to have a budget revision there for the capital project and ordinance for this Cager's Mountain EMS base. So Mr. Duncan's going to explain that to us.
Yes, sir, you have funds and proceeds from multiple sources, including fund balance that we have left over from the animal care facility. We actually got a grant from the state, so 3.2 plus million for that. We have sales tax revenues that we've been holding back in order for a project like this. And then of course, our municipal partner with Cager's Mountain EMS base, our Cager's Mountain, Town of Cager's Mountain. And then we have a, a little bit of extra funding in there from North County NCDOT. They have a driveway program for EMS and fire, and so we could be subject for $25,000 each of those to go apply toward the construction. And for a total project of everything, purchasing the land and all is 5.2 million. But the construction cost that you'll be approved is 4.588.
And none of this is borrowed, borrowed money, correct?
Well, you still have the debt service.
Oh, the debt from the, yeah, EMS base.
Yeah, and so just by not reissuing that debt, you would save approximately $400,000 to $500,000 in interest payments. So good savings there. And then we got, was able to purchase the building and the land probably two-thirds below market. Thanks to UNC Blue Ridge for that.
And we'll get a little income when we sell that land back.
Correct.
Now, we, we still ain't going to do a private partnership or we're going to try to control who moves into that, are we? And we're going to sell that, because, I mean, what happens if we sell that and say, oh, we got an EMS guy and a policeman and a nurse that's moving in? And then all of a sudden they move, and we, they have to build this house and they move in and three months later they separate and sell the house? Has it got to go back to a family, has it got to go back to a policeman or an EMS?
That'll be part of the development agreement and part of the zoning that we would work out with the municipality. That's to be determined, all of those features.
Yeah.
I don't think that cake's baked yet, is what he's trying to say.
Yeah, because I ain't been trying to tell people who will build what or how, unless they decide.
All right, so we got a presentation to make in the budget ordinance for this capital project. So do I hear a motion that we adopt the recommendation and the budget ordinance for the Cager's Mountain EMS base?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the EMS base budget revision and project ordinance.
All right, any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. All right, and next we have a resolution honoring Sherri Griffin. I think that's from Western Piedmont Council of Governments, but you're going to do that, Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, I would ask that we not spoil surprise, they're going to be honoring her, but I'd be happy to, to read it. But I'd like to say something a little more than that. Sherri has done just an amazing job. For those of you that know her, her years of service to this region has just been impeccable. The millions, maybe hundreds of millions of dollars in grants that she has brought to our community would not have been possible without her help. She has led a fantastic grants community and some of the bigger projects that you can name in our region, like Target, like Google, Microsoft, she's been involved with. And she has brought infrastructure money down to even small grants such as rehabbing somebody's home. You know, someone that couldn't afford it, someone that's indigenous. Her skills in economic development and grant writing are just phenomenal. I've worked with her on dozens of projects and it's sad that she's going to be retiring, but her years of service have been marked by an impeccable amount of money that has been brought to this community that otherwise I don't think would have been available. And she's done such a good job that granting agencies will call her and her team and say, we've got a little money left over, do you have a project? And she's always coaching the communities, the cities and counties to have something ready, be there. And there's a lot of people in this region would not have clean water to drink, they would not have sewer to their home. Sewer lines would not have gotten repaired that were built 100 years ago without Sherri's assistance, and she's to be commended. And I'd hope y'all are able to join us on the 23rd at 4 o'clock at the cog offices, they're going to honor her there. And we'd like to present this resolution to her. And of course, I've known her, she's went through two husbands, I just, I just don't think they could survive her, I guess. But she is one of the hardest working people I know, really is, and fantastic lady. And if you've never had the chance to meet her, you should. She is absolutely a gem in this community.
All right, so do I hear a motion that we adopt this resolution to be presented at that ceremony?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Next is a resolution opposing the City of Charlotte inter basin transfer request, and this is pretty important too, with the water. A lot of folks don't know what's going on there, so I'm going to throw that to our county manager, give just a little bit of explanation why we're adopting this this evening.
Yes, I'll do a quick background. City of Charlotte requested a inter basin transfer, I want to say in 2002. And then Concord Kannapolis came back and wanted to buy water from the City of Charlotte out of that IBT. And this region was successful in litigation both against Concord Kannapolis and City of Charlotte and believe it or not, Duke Energy filed an amicus brief with us at the U.S. Supreme Court. And we were able to get the second IBT reduced, basically half and half, half had to come out of the Yankton Basin before any could come out of the Catawba. Now for this third inter basin transfer, the City of Charlotte's back for an additional 33 million gallons of water. So if you, you add all that up, you're talking about, you know, in, in excess of 73 million gallons of water coming out of the basin that will never be returned. And the total, that total amount is everyone south of Charlotte and everyone north of Charlotte isn't using that much water combined. That's a big deal. This was a three-year battle, the last time that we did it, we significantly changed state law in order to make the process more public. For those of you that were here, in the second one, there were no hearings or opportunities even held in our basin until we sued and forced some meetings to be held. We had our first meeting in Hickory last week, it was standing room only, max crowd, they were having to turn people away. The city managers Hickory had offered them a larger facility, they turned it down. And so when we get into the room, the first thing we hear is that we need to apologize to y'all for not booking a better room. And then they, they subsequently said, we didn't think we would have this many people concerned about it. I will tell you now, and, and I do not want to use hyperbole, but these are the facts. You will never get patted on the back for fighting this IBT. You will never live to see it be used, but your grandchildren will. And your grandchildren will wonder why you didn't fight. That's the, the long and short of it. It doesn't affect us today, if it rains, it's not a problem. If we have a normal year, there's not an issue. But when you go into years of drought like we did in the early 2000s where we went, we basically had one drought after another from 2002 to 2009. It's when it hurts is sewer, and that is the bottom line. So if you want economic development, if you want to be able to build more housing, you're going to have to have sewer. You will not be able to expand your sewer treatment plants because it's all based when the river is at its smallest amount of flow, which is when the highest concentration of pollutants will enter the river. So we will have a very difficult time in economic development, not in this generation, but in the next. And it is a fight that you will need to do. It will take years, it may end up in the U.S. Supreme Court, and it will take a lot of money. But if you stick together as a team with everyone in this region from McDowell all the way to York County, then I think you have a very good chance of reducing this amount or maybe even changing substantially how City of Charlotte does business. And I can talk about this all day. I have a, an office of paperwork where I did this in Conover, and I think I made 34 trips to DC during that three years to fight this. The biggest concern I have is that our delegation in DC will be weakening because we'll have new people. We will not have the senior leadership like we had with McHenry and Mr. Howard Cobble when he was there. And that's, that's a concern that I have. We will have better representation at the state level where this decision will ultimately be made initially before we have to partner with the state of South Carolina potentially sue. At some point in the near future, you'll be asked to contribute funding from this county along with its municipalities and about nine other cities, counties, and local governments. Maybe, maybe all 28 in the region will apply, and we hope that there'll be others. At the meeting the other night, there were people from South Carolina, there were people all the way from Old Fort in, in McDowell County already. There's enough of us around that remember this fight and what it took. And this is the first salvo in a very, very long war.
All right. So hearing that, I'm not going to read this resolution, other than just down to the last lines of it. Was now for, and now therefore be it resolved that the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners request that the State of North Carolina Environmental Management Commission deny the City of Charlotte inter basin transfer request to modify their certificate to transfer 63 million gallons of water per day from the Catawba River Basin to the Rocky River Basin. In other words, we're against that. So I'll make that a, a motion that we approve this resolution. And does anybody else have any comment or discussion about it? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries as well. And that brings us to our water purchase agreement with the City of Lenore, kind of unique. We're talking about water a lot tonight. So we purchase our water from the City of Lenore and we've got a new agreement with them. And Mr. Manager, you want to explain anything there?
Yes, sir, the City of Lenore has approved this agreement at their last meeting and it is a, a same term sheet as you've seen before. Instead of it being a five-year renewal, it is a 10-year renewal, so extends it out to June of 2034. The only thing that changes is. The only thing that changes is that if we exceed our daily average flow that we've bought, then we pay a little bit of a premium, and that's went up slightly by about fifteen percent. Other than that, you have the same agreement as you had before.
All right, so hearing that recommendation, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting this contract this evening with the City of Lenore?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the, uh, water purchase agreement with the City of Lenore.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries as well. Next is a memorandum of understanding or MOA with the City of Lenore for our joint communications center that, uh, we've been talking for a good little bit about. And again, our county manager, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission, as you know, the state has blessed us with quite a bit of funding to build a new facility that would be a joint operations and dispatching facility, not only for us, but would also combine the PSAP with the City of Lenore as well as provide service for North County Department of Insurance, North County Office of State Fire Marshal, North County Emergency Management, the North County National Guard Cyber Security Team and others, as well as North County Viper. So we would be the center of emergency management from basically, uh, statesful going west all the way to Tennessee and Georgia lines. And as part of this, we'll be combining the PSAPs with the other communities. And I think one of the great things here is that the E-nine-one-one funding is dropping for the City of Lenore and will eventually go away. And so it could be diverted to us if we combine these PSAPs. In the first year, once we start operations in the new building, this will be a reverse grant from the City of Lenore where they pay us seven hundred and seventy-one thousand. The second year, six hundred and twenty thousand. The third year, four hundred and sixty-five thousand. The fourth year, three hundred and ten thousand, and a hundred and fifty-five thousand on the fifth year. So it's a step-down reverse grant program to us to allow us to absorb those extra costs. Um, and, um, honestly, in the previous arrangements, you've absorbed Granite Falls, you've absorbed the town of Hudson and Lenore Fire, and there was no compensation. The county just did it out of the goodness of their heart. So in this case, you will have this opportunity to slowly ramp up over time. And then this is part of a key process to get the next round of grant funding from E-nine-one-one that would pay for all of the, um, expensive custom-made switches and servers that run this very complicated nine-one-one dispatching system that otherwise we would have to write a check for out of our coffers. And this way, when you're paying your cell phone bill and your telephone bill, there is a nine-one-one fund on there. This is a way to get your tax dollars back to your community.
Very well. So hearing the, uh, description, what do I hear? Do I hear a motion on adopting this MOA with the City of Lenore for a joint communications center this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this MOA with the City of Lenore Joint Communications Center.
All right, any other discussion or comment?
I think we've been having some trouble with our communications center recently because of IT issues, because of some of the stuff being older and stuff. And so it's very important to have this, uh, new, newer communications center to be able to deal with that. You're gonna have to upgrade your equipment anyway, and I know a lot of funding is coming from the state and E-nine-one-one money to help support this and maybe even some other funding that we're looking at.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next is, uh, Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program Grant Application. Mr. Duncan?
Yes, sir. This is a new grant program that, uh, Western Peamont Council of Governments has brought to us as a planning grant, uh, to try to work with, uh, Road His, Hickory, Granite Falls, Sawmills, Hudson, Lenore, and the county to interconnect our pedestrian pathways that are either built or going to be built in the near future and have a master planning grant that would basically tie everybody together and make sure we're doing something with a plan rather than just kinda willy-nilly. Uh, all of the other communities have passed resolutions and approved this funding. Our local match will be three thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total of a hundred thousand dollar grant funds, and the local part is twenty-five thousand dollars planned three ways. All of the other communities have already passed this.
All right, so hearing that recommendation, uh, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting the Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program Grant Application?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, the Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program Grant Application.
There will be a test to say that later.
A-T-I-I-P.
Yes, all right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. And then finally, on our agenda for decisions tonight and adoption of our ordinance revisions, I think we read these at our last meeting as well and, uh, have entertained them. So remind us of this process, Mr. Manager. We're, we're, we gotta have it again tonight. And then what else do we have to do?
Yes, sir. Uh, it's required that you do read these into the record twice. Um, and you'll be approving, uh, updates to the alcoholic beverage ordinances, begging and soliciting, minimum housing code, state of emergency ordinance, animal care, building code and inspections ordinance, concealed weapons on county property, emergency management ordinance, emergency medical services ordinance, fire and life safety ordinance, noise regulations, racetracks and drag strips, public water system, septicage collection, transportation and disposal. This is the first round of many other ordinances that we'll be doing. Your ordinance books were not codified after two thousand and fourteen, so this is getting us caught up with new case law, both federal and state, as well as new law that was established by the North County General Assembly. And we have to update these every year, and so you've had a, a decade without them being properly updated. And as a reminder, just as Congress passes a law and they send it over to the President to sign, or your North County General Assembly passes a law and signs it over to the Governor's Office to sign, those signatures don't mean it is law. Not until it is codified in the record is it actually the law of the land. And sometimes that takes a long time, and so they'll say the effective date such as such, you know, maybe the law was passed in August, but the effective date is January. That's a chance to get all that codified. And so you'll be doing this every year, but this is one large group that we're gonna do at one time. And then we'll start the next round, uh, probably next month or the following month as well. And that'll be a two-month process as well. But I wanna thank every department. Everyone has worked on these. I wanna thank our county clerk. This has been a huge undertaking that she has done and keep all this organized. And I also really wanna say a big thank you for everyone. We've probably cut half of the pages down out of these that were superfluous, that did, were just completely unnecessary rules, that would quote laws that had, that were no longer even on the books. So there's a lot of cleanup. And then probably the next big thing is having a common, excuse me, a common set of definitions. Whereas laws were adopted, ordinances were adopted over time. You have to think about some of these go back a hundred years. And the language we used then is not the language we use today. So having that updated will be a huge matter and very happy that, that this has happened. So you'll all get brand-new shiny code books at the end of this, and that will be the new ordinances for the county.
All right, so, uh, hearing that recommendation, I think we have a motion to read it.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the chapters alcohol beverage on county property, begging and solicitation prohibited, minimum housing and non-residential buildings, state of emergency, animal care and enforcement, building code inspections, concealed weapons on county property, emergency management, emergency medical services, fire and life safety, noise regulations, racetracks and drag strips, public water system and septicage, collected, collection, transportation and disposal, and that we repeal any other ordinances under alcohol beverages on county property, begging and solicitation prohibited, minimum housing and non-residential buildings, state of emergency, animal care and enforcement, building code inspections, concealed weapons on county property, emergency management, emergency medical services, fire and life, safety, noise regulations, racetracks and drag strips, public water systems and septicage collection, transportation and disposal, and that the county manager has the authority to make any typographical error changes and non-substantial corrections and any other numbering, renumbering, or formatting as a result of codification.
All right, thank you, Commissioner LaBrosse. So hearing the motion, any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. That brings us to our consent agenda this evening. And again, our county manager, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Thanks, sir. Uh, first of all, we have, um, purchase of building inspection software for the Building Inspections Department. We're in the middle of rolling out a new software system, but we also have a legacy system that has to be maintained. That company no longer will allow it to be a desktop system. It must go to the cloud. And so in order to protect that legacy data, so if you want us to pull up a permit that you pulled last year or year before and you wanna see it, all that data would go away without doing this. So this would be moving that over to the cloud so we can keep that legacy information. Uh, next one would be reapportment of Mr. Jerry Church, the retired, recently retired town manager for the town of Granite Falls, uh, back to the Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute Board of Trustees. And he hopes to do this because he's supposed to go to Raleigh tomorrow to fight for more money for the community college. So if y'all don't reappoint him, he's, I guess he gets to stay at home. And then, uh, ano- another grant for, uh, from Lieutenant DePell for the NRA to try to improve our firing range with some paving. We have paving, uh, cost there, uh, to try to, uh, build a better parking lot. And the road in, in those quotes came back at about forty thousand dollars, and this would be a grant of up to twenty-five thousand and in the minutes from April ninth.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we adopt these items as has been presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has presented.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And we're going to enter into a closed session this evening on a personnel matter. So, uh, we don't have any other business, uh, before the board. And we appreciate everyone being here and your attendance here this evening. And with that, I'll make a motion that we enter into a closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A six to discuss a personnel matter with our county attorney, county manager, deputy county manager, county clerk, chief financial officer, human resources director, and any other personnel that may need to attend. Do I hear a motion that we enter into this closed session?
Same motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you everyone for being here this evening.